Good evening. We will reconvene our budget workshop, and I'll turn it over to the county manager, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Appreciate the opportunity to be back in front of you again after our presentation of the message on Monday night. Just to kind of start over with you on the binder itself, you've got the message, you've got the overview section. In that overview section, we talk about on page three, the fund structure. So if anybody wants to understand the different funds that we have and what their requirements are and why they are there, a little bit about the budget ordinance, some of the requirements under the general statute. On page five, you'll see the county's financial policies. That includes the fund balance policy that this board approved and the investment policy. The next section goes into the pay plan and classification, just a couple of comments on that. On page 11, you'll see the summary of authorized full-time positions. We go back five years on that for you and show you where we've been over the last five years. We also make a recommendation to you and we show you any changes that we're recommending. The only change this year that's recommended in the budget is under the Health Department. You'll see it asterisked there. This current year, they have 48 positions, and the recommendation is that they go to 45, and that is because the three nursing positions that are currently under the Health Department will be transitioned out as we move that service back to a contracted service under the jail, under jail health as a contract services in the jail division. The next few pages are the current pay plan that lists out where everything is. Obviously, if there are any changes, we would update those before they were finalized. Again, this is y'all's budget to do with as you please. Generally, what we have done in the past and what we would propose tonight is that we would start on the revenue side. The finance officer will go through the revenue pieces with you, and then I'll pick it up on the expenditure side, and we'll go into as much detail as you want on all those, if that's acceptable to the board.
A couple of questions. Go ahead. One, is this being filmed tonight? Public be able to see this?
It is being filmed. Actually, it's being live streamed.
Okay, so the public be able to see it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go back to page 11. Why are some of the departments on there for the 2324 blank?
The ones that are blank is where we changed that last year, or we changed it in 2122 to where the Sheriff's Office, we actually had those broken down by Sheriff's Operations, the Jail and Communications, and they're actually as a total. So you'll see that the Sheriff's Office started in 2122, we started showing that as the total FTEs, because the board has control over the total number of FTEs. The rest of them, you may see where there are blanks, like inspections, land records, they are actually rolled up under, and planning, they're rolled up under tax. Inspections, you know, land records went to plan, and we could just take those out. Some of those are consolidated, I guess is what I want to say.
Well, where is the Sheriff's number in here?
The Sheriff's number is at 96. If you look where it says Sheriff's Office.
Sheriff's Office.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I got it.
He has a total of 96 positions, and that's the same as we have in the current fiscal year.
Everybody good? So I'm going to start by saying that there's so many good things to talk about in this budget, and Brian hit on most of those Monday night. But we're looking at a budget here that's only eight tenths of a percent higher than the current year budget despite unprecedented inflation. We've also increased spending for appropriations for education and public safety in next year. We've maintained the tax rate at 62 and a half cent for next year. And all of that being said, we still have a surplus of revenues over expenditures. And as I go through the revenues, you're going to kind of understand where that additional revenue has been generated from. Having said all that, as far as water fund goes, there are no increase in any of the water fee rates. There is a slight increase of $5 in the solid waste annual fee. We're proposing that that moves from $175 annually to 180. And as Brian mentioned Monday night, that is all tied to the CPI with the contract that we have there with our provider for managing our solid waste. And that $5 increase equates to a little less than a 3% increase. So having said all that, just want to take an opportunity to thank my staff. I got some good credit for the work I've done on this budget, but I could not have done it without my staff. Have an incredible team in place. They work so hard, they do everything I ask them to do. And then the amazing thing is we all get along. We're like 12 women working in an office, and we genuinely like each other, and we work so well together. I know, it's like a miracle, isn't it? But I have to say, the best thing, I don't think a lot of people can say that, but we just vegged together now, and it's wonderful. Having said all that, for me personally, the best thing about this budget is it's my 26th budget that I've put together for local government in between working at the city and the county, and that means I only have four more to do. So I don't want to kind of, you know, wish my life away, but it can't get here soon enough. So anyway, let's jump right into revenues. So I believe Brandon's going to bring up on the screen for us what you have on page 19 of your books, which is the summary of all the general fund revenues. And that's what I'll be starting with tonight. We're going to be toggling between two different things. There it is. Can we make that a little bigger if you can, Brandon, for the folks watching on TV? I know the commissioners have their copy in front of them. So starting out at the very top, that first table shows you all of our revenues by major fund source. And of course, you see property taxes there. We're recommending for next year, an estimated number of $40.5 million. Sales tax, a little over $15 million. Our restricted intergovernmental revenues at $11.7 million. License fees and other revenues at $2.8 million. Investment income at $1.2 million. We'll talk about that in detail as we get to that. And then the administrative charges that the Water and Sewer Fund paid back to the General Fund for services like finance, HR, county administration, technology, and things like that that are paid out of the General Fund. We cost allocate a portion of that back to those enterprise fund, and that is completely appropriate to do that. It would be frowned upon by the LGC if we didn't charge that back to those enterprise funds. So all in all, for next year, fiscal year 2324, we have a recommended budget of $71,836,648. And if you look at that compared to where we were with this year's original budget, you might say, wow, what was going on in the current year that we had a $76.1 million budget? Everybody see that? And so what I'd like to remind you of is in that $76.1 million for the current year, we did three really large transfers that drove that number up. We had the million-dollar transfer for the Beaufort Promise to the Special Revenue Fund. We had the $600,000 transfer to the new Workers' Comp Reserve Fund to support that $100,000 deductible now that we have. And then most recently, we had that $5.6 million transfer of the excess fund balance to the Facility Improvement Project Fund. So moving on to property taxes. Property taxes fund about 57% of our budget, and you can see for the current year, we're actually estimating that we'll be right at $40 million collection for the levy next year. And then we generally historically collect about $600,000 in revenue for the prior year levies where people have paid late, for a total of $40,585,386 estimated revenue for our property taxes. And just want to draw your attention, Brandon, to the slide number one that I have, to kind of look in depth a little bit at our property values over the last six years. So just thought it might be nice to kind of look back historically over the last six years to see what kind of growth we've had. And if you look at our chart here, you can see that from 1920, we experienced 2.06% growth in our valuations. So these are in billions. So in 19, we're at 5.7 billion, and we grew to 5.85 billion. That was a 2.06% increase. And then from 2021, we actually had a really good year. Our growth was 3.02%, and we went from 5.85 million to the little over 6 million. I'm sorry, I keep saying billion. It is billions. So we went from the 5.85 billion mark to the $6 billion mark. And then from '21 to '22, we grew 1.67%, and then from '22 to '23, it was a 1.76% growth. So all in all, if you average our growth over the last five years, it's 2.2%. So what we're recommending for next year is to factor in a 2% growth factor for our property taxes. And we feel comfortable doing that. We met with a tax assessor, and we thought, you know, what does the number need to be? Does it need to be a 1 and 1/2% growth, a 2% growth, a 2 and 1/2% growth? But we all feel comfortable that we can meet that target of a 2% growth factor for next year, bringing the property values at an estimated $6.4 billion. Now, if we look at this slide that I have up here, what that will generate for us in dollars, that's where we get the current year levy collections estimated at right at almost This does include motor vehicles, yes. Okay, any questions about property taxes before we move on to our sales tax numbers? Okay. So moving on to page 20 of your summary in your book, the next page. So sales tax has been really interesting for us. I generally, each month, present you with the sales tax numbers because they've been just so, I'm going to say volatile and out of the ordinary. And this slide, Brandon, if we could bring up slide three of my, right here, I want to take a look at this slide. So what I did was I went back and looked at our sales tax revenues for the last 15 years. And I've actually shared this with you in a public presentation before, because I remember saying to you, you know, it's striking to me and so interesting that back in 2008, our sales tax collections were at $10.5 million. Everybody sees that number up here on the left. And then, of course, over the period of the next couple of years, we had the Great Recession, and our sales tax numbers dropped 40% all the way down to 6.5 million. And then, of course, after 2011, they started climbing back up. But it took us way until 2020, took us 12 years from 2008 to 2020, to get our sales tax numbers back to the $10 million mark. I just think that's shocking that it would take that long. Now, do we think that might happen in the future? I certainly hope not. We've talked about some of the measures that the state has put in place to expand the base for the sales tax, so hopefully that won't happen. And I don't think it will happen, but, you know, if we do have a big recession, if and when we do, it does impact sales tax, to the extent, we never know. And then if you look down here, I kind of tried to show you what the growth percentage has been year over year for the last six or seven years on our sales tax. And we have had some really strong growth in our sales tax. You know, 8.4%. It did drop to something more normal, 4.6. Then we had a really good year in '21 at 14%. Had another good year at almost 10%. And I'm estimating that will be right at 8% growth for the current year when we finish up. And then based on guidance that we've gotten from the League of Municipalities and the Association of County Commissioners, we plugged in 6.3% growth for next year for sales tax. And that would be more of a statewide number, because they're not looking at individual counties when they do that estimate. But I think it says the good as any numbers we can get to try to estimate what our growth will be in Beaufort County. So that's what has been factored in on page 20. If you look at those sales tax numbers there and compare the original for this year and what we're recommending for next year, it is 6.3% higher there. The other thing we have in this category, other than sales tax, would be, the other big hitter there is the state excise tax at the register of deeds. And this is that $2 per thousand that is paid anytime there's a real estate transfer or sale, and that $300,000 is the estimated portion that the county gets to keep for that. So all in all, you can see our original budget for this year is right at $13 million. We're recommending for next year $15 million. So we got a solid $2 million in growth there. Any questions about sales tax before we move on down to the intergovernmental? Making sense to everybody? All right, very good. Okay, so moving on down to intergovernmental revenues. So these are predominantly the revenues that we receive from the federal and state government to support DSS and health programs. And if you look down there in the box down at the bottom of page 20, about middle way, you can see that for the current year, they're at $10.244 million. That's expected to drop slightly by about $300,000. And all of that is due to the COVID-funded going away in next year. I don't believe we have any COVID funding in our budget for next year, revenues or expenditures, where we did have a little bit in the current year only now. The other thing I'd point out there, if you look at the second line up from the bottom, the EMS Medicaid cost reimbursement, Brian also talked about this a little bit. So the state is changing the way that they pay the county for our Medicaid EMS transports. It used to be that they paid us a very small portion of the transport fee during the year as we were making the transports. And then at the end of the year, they would see how much money they had left in their pot to pay out for Medicaid transport fees, and we'd have to file a report and get that money back in a lump sum. So that's why you see in prior years, we've had $285,000 income there, and that's going away to zero. But when we get on the fee side, you're going to see that the EMS transport fees are bumped way up to compensate for that.
The last line, EMS general fund tax revenue.
Yes.
What is that?
That would be the district taxes, the EMS district taxes that we collect and that the county gets to keep because we provide the services there. So we provide, the county provides services in the Washington Township District and the Bath Township District and the Pantego Township District.
Okay. So that's, what is it, 5.4%? 5.4 cents?
It's 5 cents.
Yeah, that's the maximum, right?
Yeah, I believe we're at the max, 5 cents, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
Okay, and if we flip our page over, we have our license fees and other general fund revenues on page 21. And not a lot of changes there. We are up $500,000 from the current year original budget. And like I said, that is all due to those EMS rescue fees. In the current year, we have a budget of $500,000, and that's going to $1 million. Again, has to do with that change at the state level on how we receive those upfront now when we're doing the transports instead of filing for that cost reimbursement report at the end of the year. So other than that change there, pretty much about the same as they are in the current year. Then if we move to page 22, this one's really interesting. This is the general fund interest earnings. So I've got a slide, and Brandon, if you'd bring up my last slide, please. There we go. So let's look at this, because this is really interesting. This is a, what, about an eight-year look of what our general fund interest earnings have been every year. And you can see that in 2015, they were almost nothing. That had more to do with the money that the county had not being invested rather than low interest rates. And then you can see that as, you know, we got the book straight, we were able to figure out how much money we had in the bank, we had all those two years of old bank statements reconciled, and I knew how much money I had to invest, that in 2017, we were able to start investing some of those funds, starting to see some of those interest earnings. And then they were just growing in '28 and '29. We got up to a half a million dollars in '29. And then COVID hit, and then the Fed started just taking the interest rates down to practically zero. And that's where you can see we fell to only $73,000 in interest earnings in '21 fiscal year, and then in '22, only $96,000. And during that time, I went back and looked, and in '21, '22 during COVID, we were only earning about one or two basis points in interest, meaning .001%, somewhere between that and .002%. Well, as you know, the Federal Reserve has raised interest rates every time they've met for the last year, year and a half. And so now we're earning about 350 basis points to 400 basis points, or 3 or 4% on our idle cash. So we're going to come in closer at about $2 million in interest earnings on the cash that we have on hand. So that's what I have for the summary revenues. The other thing that I wanted to show you is on page 23, just kind of give you an overview of appropriated fund balance. So there is zero fund balance being recommended for appropriation for next year, didn't need it. Like I said, we have a $2.3 million surplus, actually. We do have a fund balance policy that this board has adopted that strives for an unassigned fund balance of 35%. And as you look at that table there in the middle, you can see, you know, there are some years when we've been well above 35%. There's been some years when we've been well below that. But we did take action just a few months ago when our fund balance reached the 45.2% to transfer $5.6 million to that facility reserve fund so that we could bring our general fund balance back in line at the 35%. And so I am estimating, if you look at the calculation near the bottom of the page, that we will be at about 26.7 million percent at the close of the fiscal year we're in right now, which is going to put our estimated percentage at about 37.2% of our expenditures. Any questions about fund balance?
Well, I have a comment about fund balance. We've taken, got $2.5 million of amended surplus, and then 5.4 million that was hidden away in the capital expense fund, which we don't know yet what we're going to spend that money for. All of that's money that could easily be given back to the taxpayers as a tax reduction. And even without argument, you could give back the $2.4 million, which is about a four cent tax reduction to the taxpayers. We hid away the 5.4 million, and I seriously question what we're going to use that for. The board voted to dump the money in there without bothering to earmark what it would be spent for. So we really have got about $7 million that should be given back to the taxpayers.
I mean, I agree with what you said. The 5.6 million was surplus above our 35% policy. And like you said, the board did vote to move that to the facility reserve based on a study that we had back, and I believe it was 2017, where we had about $28 million worth of facility needs coming up over the next 15, 20 years. So I think our board made a choice to take that money and set it aside and reinvest in our county facilities and fix some things that have been put off for a very long time. Any other questions about revenues? Okay, that's what I have for revenues. Thank you very much. I think the manager's going to go into expenditures next.
Anita, if you go back to page 19 on the property taxes and sales tax, can you do us a table that shows what you're projecting the number to be for '23 versus the recommended budget?
I have that number here in this presentation.
Because when I got it from your handout, this one, it appeared that we were expecting a 6.3% increase in sales tax, and I think you said six, so.
Oh, you said sales tax.
Well.
I thought you said property tax. Are we talking property tax or sales tax?
Sales tax.
Sales tax.
Sales tax.
So for next year or this current year?
I'm sorry, it's on page 20. I'm looking on page 20, where you show the various sales tax numbers.
Right.
Because if we look at the amended budget, annual recommended budget, I mean, we're looking at numbers like 17%, 14%, 18%, and 18% versus what your projected number's going to be.
So I worked off of this year's projected number. So if I'm projecting, and I don't know that I have that number with me, but I might, just get help with that.
Well, I'm not asking for it right now, but if you just.
No, but I think I do have it. Okay, I do have that number. So for this year, we are projecting to finish fiscal year '23 at June 30, 2023 at $13,819,636.
I'd like to have a table that shows the breakout, just like you've got here.
By the articles?
Yeah.
Okay, sure.
That's one of them. And you can just email that to us.
I'll be happy to get that to you.
Be fine.
And I did that this week because I wanted to look at the schools, because as you all realize, the Article 40 and 42, sales tax articles, a portion of that has to go to the schools for school capital. They get 30% of Article 40 and 60% of Article 42. And you might remember my email I sent you this week. I am estimating for this year, we'll owe them probably an additional $350,000.
John has a question.
Page 22, did you say that you've got down there under recommended for '23, '24, 1.2 million in earnings, and you said 2 million?
That's, I'm expecting we end up at 2 million for this year.
For this year.
The 1.2 is probably really light, and I will tell you why. The 1.2 is probably really light and I will tell you why. I don't know what the economy's going to do. I don't know what the feds are going to do moving forward. So we did bump that number down. I might would be comfortable in moving that number up some, knowing that if we don't need that budget number, we'll have to draw down probably on fund balance, which is probably not a real big issue either. But 1.2 million is extremely conservative, not knowing if we're headed for a recession or what the feds might do over the next year with interest rates. Are they going to keep raising them? Might they bring them down some? Just not really sure what's going to happen.
Are we laddered in in terms of the investments?
So right now, we've, we're getting just as good a rates on our money market as we are like CDs that would be ladder, believe it or not, at the cash management trust. So we be going back and forth with our local bank and the trust, just trying to see who has the largest return on mainly money markets.
Okay, so if you lock them in on a CD, then you would be guaranteeing your rates next year?
If we lock them in for 12 months.
For six months or 12 months?
Yeah.
So Commissioner Rebels, I think our concern with that is we don't get much insight at all, if any, into the sales tax numbers. We just get what the state tells us and it's hard for us to estimate that. And we have, for the last year, we are waiting for the next, for the shoe to drop on that.
Well, not talking about sales, we're talking about investment income.
Correct. But that's the piece that worries us, is both of those.
Okay. So if you come up short on sales tax, you want to have the investment?
I mean, we want to make sure that we're solid on the revenue side. I mean, we're not going to spend it if, I mean, it's not like we readjust and redo the budget based on increased revenues. We don't go back in and add to it. We do show it at the end of the year, but the budget gets set on that number and we wanted to be fairly conservative about where we were because we didn't want to have a budget that was, that was out of bounds and end up being in trouble with it.
I think another thought that I would have about that is, you know, we were able to generate much of the $2.3 million surplus with the additional interest earnings. And so, you know, the board has an opportunity to do whatever they want and vote to do with that $2.3 million. Our hope is that you'll invest in our most valuable asset, which is our employees and use it for the pay study or use most of or part of it for the pay study. And so in thinking about that, if you do choose to spend it on the pay study, then we've got a recurring operating expense on the expenditure side that you would be banking on interest earnings to stay at or above what I've estimated here to support moving in the future. So if we estimate it really conservatively on the revenue side, then we can feel much more comfortable that we can support that expenditure side moving forward. Hopefully that makes sense the way I said that.
I think you're definitely underestimating on the earnings side because for the kind of economy we're in, the interest rate should continue to go up on our investments. The scary part is the sales tax.
It is. It is.
And there's all kinds of opinions out there. But I think the one that talks mostly about North Carolina's economy says it is a very, very mild recession and he's very optimistic.
So and Mr. Chairman, also, this is also concerning that what this board may do with some of that, with some of those idle funds. This board is very aggressive about moving forward with the solid waste piece. So there's funds you may draw down over the next year that are not, that are outside of this budget.
Right.
That will impact that number if you so make large expenditures on that, which y'all talked about doing.
That's an excellent point. I mean, I think most of us here are a pay-as-you-go kind of people. I mean, I think that's a good way to manage, you know, our facilities moving forward if we can pay for it instead of finance it, especially with the rates like they are now. That's probably the way we want to go. So that would definitely put a large impact on interest earnings moving forward when we start building the facilities we're talking about building.
I like how you've done it. It looks like you're putting yourself in a position to be pleasantly surprised with sales tax.
We always are very conservative on revenues and that's just what they teach you at the school of government. You know, worst case scenario, they'll come in better and we can add to our fund balance and decide what to do with that fund balance. You don't ever want to be caught where, you know, you've got the expenditures, they're operating, they're reoccurring, you've got to pay them, but then you've overestimated your revenues and they're not going to be coming in in the future to support that expense that you have that's ongoing. Anything else, commissioners, on revenues? Very good. Thank you so much.
All right, I'm going to pick it up on page 25. You'll see the sheet. You'll probably need to take that one out. It's done landscaping, it's on 11 by 7 or eight and a half by 11, 11 by 14, legal size. So these are the, this is a summary of the general fund expenditures. And in the chart that we show you, we actually show you '22 actual, fiscal year '22 actual. We show you where you are as of '23, '23, that's when we started building the budget where that actual expenditures were. We show you what the original, this year's budget was. We show you as of '04, '01, '23, where we are projecting that budget to close out at, or where the revised budget was as of '04. And then we show you what we projected to close out at. You have the requested amount that came in from the department and then you have the recommended amount in the budget that's part of the manager's recommended budget where we went through and looked at numbers with the department heads and either adjusted those up or down based on their request. So I'll go through these. I'm happy to stop. Anytime you want me to stop, we can go into as much detail or as little detail as you want. We try to make it fairly easy to look at on a broad category. So the first one is the governing body, which is board's budget. That is on page 31 in your book. And just to show you all, for everybody, on page 31, you see it's the governing body, board of commissioners. It talks about who the governing body is, what they do. It lists the contact information for the governing body, lists the members and their terms. Then there is a roll-up of personnel, benefits, operating capital, and then the total amount. So all that rolls up into those numbers. We show you fiscal year '21, '22 actual. We show you '22, '23 original. We show you the amended and we show you recommended and then it's blank for whatever you guys approve. And then you go to the next page on page 32 and you will see the line item budgets and they, for your department. And that shows each line item as the requests are made and goes through that exact same process to where you can see where it was this year, where it's projected to be, what's being requested and where it's being recommended and then final approval on that. So as you'll notice on the governing board's budget, that is projected at a 4.2% increase from last year. If you look in detail on that page, the majority of that increase is based on some professional development. Obviously, the board's doing some more traveling and at conferences now with the pandemic being gone or moved away. We've put a little extra in legal services as each year we occasionally run into some things that are outside the county attorney's purview and we engage some outside counsel. So there's some additional funds in there, but the majority of that is related to that. So you'll see that that recommended budget is 403005 and it is a 4.2% increase from last year. Any questions more on that one? Happy to go into it.
Any question? We'll get it.
Okay. The next one is on page 33. That's the county administration budget. That's my budget and the folks that work in our office, communications director, admin assistant, the clerk and the risk manager, safety officer. That budget is a 3% increase. The majority of that is related to some additional professional development. You'll recall that this board approved the clerk being a part of the clerks association, taking a leadership role in that. So there was some additional funding that needed to do that throughout the year for her to be able to handle those things. And then we had some additional for equipment as we bring on our new communications director and pick up some additional supplies and things for that. So overall, right at 3% increase. Happy to answer any questions you may have in detail on that one.
John.
Brian, as I went through this, the professional development in almost every department went up significantly. Is that because of the traveling, you think?
It is. Everything during the pandemic essentially shut down and what we've tried to do is, I mean, our folks, we want to make sure that they're engaged and that they are educated at the level they need to keep their credentials. So yes, every one of them have gone up because not only are we back doing to a level where we were before the pandemic, but obviously the costs are up a little bit.
Good.
Okay. So we'll move on to finance. That's on page 35 and you'll see the finance office and the staff there and all the roll-ups. Theirs increases a 1.1% increase. Nothing significant about, really significant about that. I mean, when you think about health insurance rates that have gone up a little bit, that essentially covers the majority of that. So nothing substantial, but happy to answer any questions or kick it over to the finance office if you have something really detailed that I can't answer for you. Yep, okay. Human resources is on page 37. If you'll note there, there's the human resource director and the benefits coordinator and the human resource specialist. That budget is flat. It's 0.6% increase. And again, you know, if you look at, there's an increase in benefits and there's a slight increase on, actually her operating is just up, you know, 300 bucks. So overall, I think, you know, we talked about this in the original presentation of the message, our department heads did a really, really good job of looking at their budgets and holding them tight and making sure that we were doing what we needed to do. I mean, we essentially said to them, you know, the board has put out there that we're going to look at a pay and classification study and if you are interested in trying to keep that where it needs to be, then bring us a good tight budget. And our department heads did that, so. But again, that's a 0.6% increase. So essentially that one's flat, but happy to answer any questions you have on that Okay, on page 39 is the tax assessor's office. You'll see the org chart there and the roll-up from where we were. They are up about 3%. Again, same kind of thing. I know Mr. Rebel said up a little bit on professional services. Theirs went up a little bit also on computer software and support. Obviously, they have GIS and they have some other software and support that they need that keeps that office functioning at a very high level. But in general, you know, we're at 3% and you think about a, think about a CPI of over six and our folks are holding it right where it needs to be. So Lloyd is here if there are any questions that you have for him of that budget.
John.
Lloyd, what was it, two years ago, we gave you two more people, right? Okay. Can you give us an evaluation of how well that's working because I'm hearing that the tax increase assessment is going up at about 2.2%. And I think when we talked about those two people, it was, you were going after additional taxable properties.
So you're going to, you're going to see a little bit of difference in there too. When we looked at Ms. Rapliss's presentation and you saw the levy amount and you actually saw the total tax amount, it gets kind of funny with my department because some of what we've been working towards actually is going to actually result in a bit of a levy increase where you may have a bit more of that than you do the overall. And I can explain that. Working through the exemptions, which we've started doing, one of my positions was to work on present use value and so forth and to make sure that the exemptions are all proper. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of, the overall number in some of that raised at a very reasonable amount, the overall in that. But yet what happened was we rolled out some of those items. So you get interest rollbacks, you get three-year, you know, discovery penalty, you get rollbacks. In other words, the levy itself has increased a lot. If you look at that levy increase amount, which was 6%, I forget the amount, the levy increase one year to the other. But the levy increase, and then you look at the total increase, you have a bit of it in there. And that's one thing we worked on heavily. I think it was, I figured out the number the day, I think we figured that just the ag and forestry part, the one position that we had, we were looking at, being a specialist in that, we looked, this year was one of the first year that we had a large number of properties rolled out of the program that were not done by sale. In other words, they were done through audit, they were done through mistake. We finally gotten into that, we're finally doing that. We're not at the number I want to be at, looking at. The law requires me to look at roughly 400 a year. We're getting there, but we're not quite yet. So that's a big part of ours. We think there was around $171,000 out of that program that came into the revenue stream, to the levy itself, not tax-based, mind you, the actual money. And again, that's going to look a little funky because some of that's interest, some of that's discovery penalty. The other thing that we got was a real property manager. One thing he's been working on, real property supervisor, lead worker, he's been working on the revaluation with the team that is doing the revaluation. He's also been working with the present use value himself. That's been a big piece of that. As far as other thing, you all actually, and I'll go so far as to say, you also increased one of my positions last year, you re-classed one. What we've done with that is actually car work, we've done automobiles and so on and so forth like that. If Commissioner Booth was here, he'd tell you, I hit him with the, with the tax increase on his classic car. We did that across the board. That was using that position to take a deeper dive into that. I would actually go so far, and not to be ego, but I would go so far as to say that we figured a couple of times, maybe as much of a, I don't know, as much as we can argue about it, but two-fifths of the increase that we've had may be because of the work of the department. I mean, a reasonable amount at least. And I can say PUV for sure, 171, but probably past that because a lot of the stuff is the stuff, once it comes out, it's also increased in value for forward years. But it's nothing untoward. It's stuff that should have been out anyway. I mean, we found, we found a forest, we found a Christmas tree farm in the county that we took out of the program. I mean, come on. It's been there since 98, I think, or something. I mean, we're finding these things, these are the tax differences and this is actually the people, the positions you funded, the positions you funded are doing it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
A Christmas, you found a Christmas tree farm?
Yes. So we, I probably shouldn't have told you, but it's, I mean, it's public knowledge. We had a, we had an exemption for, for, a horticultural-related exemption for someone who was actually growing Christmas trees in the county and they had been 20, 30 years ago and it was removed out of the program.
Is that, that doesn't count? Is that?
It would if it was still there, but it's not been there in 20 years.
Oh, okay.
So yeah, we're.
When they find out that they couldn't grow Christmas trees in this area.
Well, basically what happened is a big field.
Big field.
So I mean, to say, but we're finding a lot of that and part of that is because some of that's self-report unless you audit. You don't audit, it's.
Were they growing cedar trees and calling them Christmas trees?
I would say whatever. It's been 20, it's been a long time ago since there was anything there.
I just have a lot of curiosity, curiosity there.
What you're saying is still a field.
That's right. There's going to be houses pretty soon, but anyway.
Okay, thank you. So I guess one, one general comment about Lloyd's office and one of the things that he tries to do, and in general, when you, when you talk about taxes and assessing property and making sure that things are done correctly, it's about fairness. There are programs that the state allows for exemptions, whether it's present use, whether there's elderly exemption, whether veterans exemptions, and Lloyd will tell you that if they can find somebody who is eligible for that exemption, they are doing everything they can to help that person get that exemption. Likewise, if you are not eligible for that exemption and you have been claiming it, you don't, it's not fair for you to claim something that you're not eligible for. So they are doing everything they can to make sure that it is equitable and it is fair and that the law is applied appropriately.
I wasn't criticizing, I was just saying, you know, during the, during the discussion in which we allocated the two extra heads, there was a return that we were told we were going to get. So that was all I was.
Right, no, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't, didn't mean to make it sound like that. I think just in general, you know, you may hear folks say, well, the tax offices, whatever. But I will tell you that if you are due an exemption, Lloyd is the first one to say, you should be getting this exemption. They're trying to do a lot of education to help people understand what exemptions are available and are trying to help people get those if they qualify for them, so.
And that was that position, was an exemption specialist. So that's why I picked on that a little bit. That one, we have a sure return. The other one is working on that stuff, working on other things. It's a little more, but yeah, absolutely. Over the amount for both of them has absolutely come back. The other quick thing is we've also been through the real property lead. We've actually been finding some permit misses in the county, people who maybe didn't get permits, that maybe should have got permits, improved their property, added property. We found a lot of that this year too. improved their property, added property. We found a lot of that this year, too. Just to show that.
So your next one is the Tax Collector's Office with Wynn. That was actually down almost 1%. The majority of that is on the tax foreclosures. As you're aware, we have a contract with a, with a law firm that handles that, and we pay, you know, based on the number of foreclosures they do. And, and those are, those are trending down a little bit. So, so we actually, that's, that's the majority where that 1% came out of. Court Facilities are on page 43. This is the budget in which we look after the courthouse, pay for the operation, pay for some operation work over there that the clerk is allowed to do. It also is the utilities and the maintenance and repair. You'll see on that one that the majority of this, it's up 3%, where the majority of it is utilities. And everybody knows their utilities have gone up some. And we've also bumped up the, the maintenance and repair over at courthouse by, by, we actually almost doubled that from 7,500 in the original budget to 14,000. So trying to look after that investment and pay the bills at courthouse. So any questions on that one?
What are facility fees?
Facility fees are the, are the, is the funds that we receive from the, when you go to court. So there's a, there's a court fee that you pay.
Right.
And you receive some of that on the revenue side.
Okay, okay. So, and is that set by the state?
It is set by the state. And then we, then we, the board is allowed, the board is allowed to do with, those funds roll into the general fund, and you're allowed to do with those, what you really, what you want to do with them, but you're required to keep courthouse. And what the board did several years ago was, they set aside some of those funds directly for the clerk of court to do some things that he may need to do, because he doesn't have much of a, you know, his state budget is mostly just personnel. So, so we use some of those funds for that. So we'll move on to, to elections. And Kelly's here, if you have any questions on that. It's page 45. They're only up 2%. They are asking for some, they've got some surface expansion items overall. But as you recall, and Kelly can explain it a whole lot better than I can, you know, each, each year is different in that, in that the number of elections they're doing. This year is a municipal side, but it also throws in some of the presidential side. And whether we have, and I'll say this, you know, whether we have a second primary or not, we, Kelly always comes in and shows it to us when we, when there's anticipation, or there potentially could be. And we always say, no, we're not going to do that unless it happens. You know, we don't want to set money aside and have it sitting over there. If we have to have something like that, then we would come to you and say, this is not something we normally anticipate. But if you have to have a second primary, did I say that right, Kelly?
Correct.
Okay. So she, they're, they're up 2%. And she can answer any questions you may have. I can't answer any. Good. All right. So on page 47 is the Register of Deeds. The Register of Deeds is down ever so slightly, 0.2%, so essentially flat. And I think, she is here, there she is. So if you have any questions for the elected register of deeds, she'll be glad to answer any of those questions about her budget. But it is, it is slightly down by $832. Okay.
Brian, good.
Page 49 is facilities maintenance. And this is, these are the funds, and this is kind of the big page, where we pay utilities and, and work on public buildings. We also, this is the staff, that are our maintenance staff. And you'll see that budget is down about $18,000 or 1.2%. Christine is here to answer any of those questions if you have. Some of the funds, some of the building and maintenance repairs from the original are down slightly. So that's, that's where you, you take out a little bit of that money. But, but overall, it balances out, because utilities are up a little bit. So $18,000 on a $1.5 million budget is really not, really not much. So slightly down 1.2%.
Brian, under utilities for the courthouse.
Yes, sir.
Under public buildings, we're showing that's 50%. It's 133,000. And then under the court facilities, we're showing 133. So are we looking at $266,000 for the courthouse?
We are. Yeah.
I've never, I've never paid any, I've never saw that before.
So we're paying for the utilities separately for, you know, the court. Some of this is out of the court, and then the jail and other operations that are not court-related. So we try to break out some of that. We broke it out about 50% on utilities.
John said maybe we need to invest in solar panels, put up there on the top.
We're not, we're not messing with that roof. We spent a lot of money on getting that roof straight. We don't want anybody drilling any holes in that roof.
All right.
So debt service, page 51. You'll see the debt service has come down 2.2%. And that's as we pay off our debt, the, the interest rate on that goes down. So you'll see, we've, we've dropped that by $59,000 on, on debt. Also, if you continue on that page and move over to page 52, you'll see our existing debt requirements that show what debt we have, the description, energy contract, the US, the health building out at the community college, and all the different things we have. You'll see what our actual fiscal year cost was, what our budgeted, what our interest rate is, what type of, what type of loan it is. Majority of those are installment loans. And installment loans simply means that the collateral for the loan is the item itself. So it's one, it's called 160A financing. So if you default, if, if you were, which you would not, but if you were to default on that, they would take the item back. So, so the health building out at, at the community college, if you defaulted on that, then they would go foreclose on that, which, of course, the LG, first of all, you'd never do that. Second of all, the LGC would never let you do that. But it's a way for us to do financing that's pretty streamlined with the banks. And you don't have to get into the geo bond financing, because geo bonds are extremely expensive. They take a lot of work and a lot of time, and they're expensive to do. But you'll see, we do have two geo bonds, and those are typically school bonds. And just incredible interest rates that are locked in on those, you know, a little over 1%. So overall, very, very good on those. You'll see on page 53, these are the actual numbers. And you'll see the principal and interest on those.
I just have one question. Who's the energy contract with?
I think that was with Schneider.
Yes.
When we did that years ago, where they said if we, if y'all entered a contract with him, where they said if we put these, this equipment in, it will lower your energy costs. And of that, you will pay for the equipment by those savings.
And then we ran into front of the court.
I'm not a fan of energy saving contracts.
That, that contract is all related to the schools, right?
No, that's some of our stuff. That's our stuff.
We have one in the school.
They have their own. That's, that's at their place.
Oh, this is all
Ours, ours are the, the controls that are around for heat and air conditioning and a couple other things that they did with boilers and chillers. So. On page 55, you have the non-departmental. So these are items that kind of, that are not specific to any one department. And they roll up. You'll see how those are listed out, unemployment insurance, you know, health insurance co-pay, assistance programs, the luncheon. That is deep, that is increased by 14.2%. We talked about that when I presented the message to you. That's, it's a 26% increase in property and liability insurance from the association, the league pool. Again, that's all due to the secondary reinsurance market collapsing. I think there are three or four of those companies left in the world who do reinsurance. So it's driven the price of reinsurance up. And with that, with all the natural disasters over the last several years, insurance has just taken a big, big hit. And we are not immune to that. So that's the predominant increase in that line item.
What, what is the capital act lay of 100,000? Is that, is that computers?
Well, it's actually, you know, we have, we have things like air conditioning systems that sit on our roofs that we might have fail, chillers and things like that, that might end up failing, that we don't know, that we try to program, we're starting, we're starting to try to program those out. But we all, we always each year try to set some aside, so that if we need something, we can do that.
So it's a contingency for capital?
Essentially, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So then on page 57, you'll see transfers to other funds. Now, this is the one that Anita was talking about. You'll see that's a 59% decrease, 1.5 million dollar decrease. So in this item on page 57, you'll see the reevaluation fund. And this is the last payment this year to the reevaluation fund. Next year, it will start over again, and it will go up, because we, we shrunk the reevaluation time. And of course, the price is going up anyway. But that's required by statute. You're supposed to take the number of years that you are going to do your revaluation. Typically, that's eight. Y'all shrunk it down a little bit. So whatever that year, whatever those number of years are, you are required to estimate what it's going to cost you when you have to do it, divide it by that number of years. And the law says you have to set that money aside each year to be able to do your revaluation. You know, it's just, they're forcing you to plan for that, which is a good thing. So you'll see that one. Real quickly, the Economic Development Fund, where it says $45,000, that is the airport grant. We kind of call that the airport grant. That's where, when the county and the city broke apart on the joint used airport, and they set the base level, anything above that certain dollar amount goes to the city. So that's, it flows through us, because it's only taxed at the county rate out there. So we, we pull that out and give them that excess. That's what we call the airport grant, which is to the Economic Development Fund. You'll see the funds going over to the capital improvement. You'll see the capital reserve. That is where, you'll recall, several years ago, the Board of Elections came to you and said, we've got to replace election machines. Can y'all start setting money aside for that? You did. It worked out really, really well. They said, let's keep continuing to do that, just not at the same rate. So we're putting $30,000 aside each year for that. You have the money. This is where you don't show that money coming this year, the $1 million for the Boefer Promise. That's already been set aside. The workers' comp reserve, there is. You'll see last year, there was $746,000 that was set aside for that, to build that fund. This year, we're putting $200,000 in it, because we saved those, that money. Yes, sir.
What is the 5.128 million in the, in that line? On the next page, it shows it under Fund 108, or 180. Do you know what, what Fund 180 is?
Wait a minute. When you say the 5.128, the 2122 actual?
2122 actual, yeah.
I think, I, I think that's in the wrong column.
Okay. Because if you go on the next page, it shows it under Fund 180, whatever that is.
Fund 180 is the capital fund.
The what?
The capital fund. So that's where we transferred that excess fund balance. And I think we just have it labeled wrong on page 57.
Well, we transferred it up under Facility Improvement Capital Fund under 2223. We transferred 5.4 million. Oh, that's 620, 6.2 million up there? 5.4, that was what we transferred.
I, I need to look at that. I'm not really sure what that is then. I was thinking it was the excess fund balance transfer. Let me look at that.
Okay, okay.
Look at that during a break and let you know.
Okay.
So we got that one. Anita's going to bring it back to you. Contingency on page 59. As you recall, last year, we typically fund that at 100,000. Last year, it was at 100,000. I think the board pulled some money out of that to fund something else. So it was taken down to 7882. We took it back to 100,000. So that's why you see that increase of 21,000, which equals 26%. Then they get you into Social Services. And that begins on page 61. So Social Services, and Melanie is here, having questions about that. They get their numbers from the state. The state tells them what they are projecting that they would be spending. And they have given them a number that's slightly less than where they were, about $197,000 down. That's only 1.5% of their budget, because their budget is pretty large, and it's 12.5 million budget with all the programs they provide and the services that they provide. I hit my mic, sorry about that. Melanie, anything that you want to talk, any questions y'all have on that?
Yes.
I think in general, y'all know how that works. They provide the service. There's a reimbursement. They keep, they keep, what, what's the form number?
1570.
1570. I can't remember the 1570. But that is where they file the 1570. It shows the reimbursement they get from the state, and whether that's a 50% reimbursement, whether it's a 75% reimbursement, or however it turns out to be. There's some big changes, obviously. They're coming to DSS with Medicaid transformation and Medicaid expansion. They've got some service expansions laid out for you on that, based on whether the state budget does what the state budget's going to do, and whether that all passes. The state has said that, in fact, we got a note today from the state, that they are going to advance some funds to the counties. So that, because they don't anticipate if and when Medicaid expansion passes on July 1, they don't think they'll have the funds flowing until October. So they're going to advance us five months or so of funds, so that we can start that work. And essentially said, you know, you've got to only use it for, for those services only, which we would. And then if you don't use it all up, which I think the total was only like $88,000. So it's not
That was actually 55,000.
That one was 55, okay. So one was 55, one was 88. So I mean, when you think about $55,000, you know, 12 million budget, it's, it's nothing. But, but we would make sure those funds were spent appropriately, and that we'd spend those first, actually, to make sure we didn't send any back to the state. So, but Melanie, can I answer any questions you have about that?
Okay. One, how much COVID supplies do you have left over? And is it a burden to, in storing these things? And how long will you keep them?
It's funny you ask that, because we actually just looked at that this week, or last week with our housekeeper. We have the space for them. We do have, still have some of the supplies there. Some of the supplies have actually already expired, so we did dispose of those. But we do have still some, not, not in abundance as much as it was.
So it's not a burden?
No.
Okay.
No.
When you, when you look at your salaries, 23 projected number is 4.3 million, and in 24, the recommended is 5.3. I'm assuming you've got several positions that are
We, we do, just, just like across the state and across the nation, really. Since COVID started, we, you know, had a workforce shortage, and certainly this year, we've had numerous positions, I would say, that where we've posted, reposted, reposted, and reposted again. So that's where that difference is, is just trying to, to get the positions filled with qualified individuals.
Are you, are you almost 20% short?
I'd say we're about 10% right now.
10%.
10%. Just right off the top of my head.
The Forests Service, but I, I think it was last week, they're down 20%.
Yeah. We, I think we've, in the last couple of weeks, we've made some offers. So I think we're probably around 10 to 11 right now.
We have to start again. We're getting it.
Yes. So Mr. Chairman, I think that, you know, in the, in the message that we brought Monday night, we talked about that, and that the county, whether folks may think that or not, we are not exempt from the pressures for employees that everybody across the business sector is seeing. You ask anybody in private business and private sector, are they struggling to find employees? They'll tell you, yes. And we are under those same exact pressures. And that is why we so much appreciate the board looking at and having the updated pay and classification study. Because without that, we are going to, you know, the private sector is, is doing what it needs to do to, to find employees. And we need to be able to compete in that same arena and keep our folks not, you know, and, and be an organization that looks after their folks, so they'll stay. It, it costs us a tremendous amount of money when we lose somebody. And so DSS is a clear example of that.
I, I guess this, that question leads to
Revenue?
No, no, no. The memorandum of understanding that we have with the state, and we have two pages on 64 and 65, this matrix. When you're down 10%, I mean, some of these are pretty, pretty tough. I mean, if you don't have a drop in the number of participants, and you've got to turn things around in 45 or 60 days.
Right.
Is, is there any threat to us having to pick up any
Penalty.
Penalties, this county?
If you look at our overtime line, you will see a large expenditure for overtime, where our current staff have been working over to meet the needs.
To meet
Certainly, we don't want to continue that. You know, our staff works You know, our staff work so hard already, but that's how we've met the needs. We've actually transferred, requested transfer funds from salaries to our overtime to help meet the needs. So that's how we've done that.
I mean, the numbers look good, except for, you know, a few of them, which I thought was probably related to personnel.
If they're the lower numbers related to child welfare, they are growth measures. They're not counted in the penalty section or the mandated measures. Those are federal measures, and we actually do pretty well compared to a lot of counties across the state in those, in those measures, even though some of them we didn't meet. So it's growth and working on trying to meet them, but no penalties for those.
Thank you. How many folk are you losing at Pitt County?
One that came here and went back. It's just one.
Just one? That's good, okay. The ones that, once they got their masters, that were leaving us and going, has that stabilized?
No, we recently lost two more. That, they, what we have found is they're not going to other departments of social services. They're either going to the private sector where they can make more money, hospital, school system. Those, we have not lost.
Okay.
To, you know. But we have a significant number over the last three years.
John? Just a couple of comments so that the public knows. We're down this year to 42.8% of your budget is county funded. That's down from 44% last year. So there's been that decline in terms of that funding. On the other hand, we've got 33.6% of the population of this county is on Medicaid. And if we're going to have a 20-some percent increase, that means almost 40% are going to be on Medicaid.
Some of those individuals are currently on Medicaid already because during the COVID-19 pandemic, there were waivers. And so we were recertifying, they paused about April of 2020, and then in August, we began recertifying again, but we could not take action if that case was to be reduced or terminated. So that caused that increase. So some of the individuals are on now, some are not. There will be maybe some new people, but some individuals are currently receiving. I think the state's hope is, is that the state budget passes quick enough where, as we're recertifying those, because we began recertifying in April, as we start recertifying, if the state budget passes, which Medicaid expansion has passed, but the final piece of it is the state budget, they're hoping that we don't have to take people off and then bring people back on. So some of the people on will stay on, some of the people that are eligible are not on right now.
It's just a big number.
It is, it is a big. Where, last time I checked, a little over 15,000.
Yeah. How many people do you have on the food and nutrition program?
Last time I looked, there were about 5,300.
Okay. Is that SNAP? Is that what that is?
That is SNAP. It's North Carolina's name for it, is Food and Nutrition Services, but the federal SNAP is not SNAP.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Randy.
Are you still housing people at night on an emergency basis?
We are still doing that. We have worked really hard, and we're working really hard with Trillium to try to prevent that. But as I've said, for the last, I think, five years I've come, we are still spending a large amount of county, every year, it's gone up more county funding, having to pay for a sitter if a child is at the ED waiting for a placement, paying overtime if they're actually staying in our agency. We generally have two staff while we're waiting to locate placement. And then sometimes we can locate a placement, but the assessment process sometimes can take up to two weeks, three weeks, just depending, just the system we have. So where they were previously has to fill out forms, releasing, and then we get the new placement, to fill out forms, accepting, and then Trillium, it goes to Trillium, and they do an approval. So a lot of times, there's just a delay, but as you all know, we have to have somewhere for that child to sleep.
Is that, is that a daily occurrence, or a weekly occurrence, or monthly occurrence?
Right now, I would say it is weekly to monthly. We do have a child right now waiting for a vacant bed, and that child is actually at the emergency department. But we've gone from $20,000 a year of county funding to 30,000 to 40,000, and this year, we're probably going to end up somewhere around 60,000.
That's why we approved the bathroom and all that last year, right?
That's right. And they are just, they are almost finished with that. They've got to install the washer and dryer, but they're real close with that. We'd love to have you all come, come take it to work.
Going to have a ribbon cutting?
Probably not. But for, yes.
Under State In-Home Agent Services, last year, we started doing something at the Washington Senior Center. What is that? Is that meals or...?
So I think you're referring to our congregate meal site? Is that...
It says at the top, State In-Home Agent Services, and then it's got Washington Senior Center. We got $30,000 in the budget.
Oh, that's the new one. So that line is for HCCBG services. It's actually not through DSS, but it is going through our budget. It's money in, money out, and that is what the HCCBG funds that the senior center gets. That's what that line is. But it's straight money in, money out, and it's just running through our budget this year.
That was a change. Prior years, it flowed directly, but now, for some reason, there's been a change. The COG advised us that those funds had to flow through us instead of flowing directly from the COG to the senior center, so.
Is that just like some of the extension fund money, 4H, or it just flows in and flows out through us?
Oh, I mean, it's, no, I wouldn't characterize it as that kind of funding.
Right.
It's part of that overall home and community block grant that comes to the county, and we're the lead agency for that. The county's the lead agency, so DSS receives some of that, and the senior center receives some. But it's a, it's a block grant that comes to the county.
Once you get everything going on this Medicaid expansion, I hope you keep us, come back and update us on what's going on.
We will. And we do have an expansion, because I know that's not tonight, but we will talk more about that, but on expansion night. But the funding that Brian talked about earlier gives us some upfront funding to go ahead and get staff hired if the commissioners approve additional staff. And then for the next three years, it will be funding, the county will have zero funding towards that. So with the 75% reimbursement we receive right now for eligibility functions, the state budget allows for the state to kick in the other 25% for at least the first three years. So, you know, we'll talk more about that, but certainly.
So Anita and I talked about that, that funding this afternoon. So you'll see us bring that, that upfront funding that we're talking about, the state's going, that DHHS is going to send in anticipation of Medicaid expansion. You'll see that at the June meeting, and what we'll do is we'll bring it to you and put it in the budget, and then it will be set aside as a reserve in the fund balance, and then we'll use it. If it passes, we'll use it to do what we're supposed to do. If it doesn't pass, we'll send it back to the state. Good. So the next one is on page 71, it's the Health Department, and I apologize, Janelle had, Janelle's daughter had a recital tonight, and so she needed to slip out. But as you'll see on this one, it's down $379,000 or 7.2%. And that is, the majority of that is where we moved the jail health out of the Health Department and back to a contract service. We will be bringing you a contract with AGOPI for jail health services to be able to provide that service and provide it locally. We should have that for you at the June meeting, contingent upon the budget. And so that's the majority of that. As you'll see on page 71, they are similar to DSS in that they receive a lot of state funding to provide the services they do. They also have, they also bill, and they have insurance, and then they other grants. But local funding this year is 42%. So the majority of the share is being paid for by the state or by billing services, and that generally, in fact, it's down, I think, a little bit. I think generally, they're around 42, I mean, around 45%. So I think it's down just a little bit compared to last year. So that is where that is. And Anita can, Anita just punched me and told me she had the number on that you had a question about.
Brian, last year, the funding was 39%. Do you know what happened? Because the only change here is that, the jail stuff.
Yeah, COVID. I mean, because there was a tremendous amount of funding last year for COVID. So when you look at the additional state money that came in, it lowered the percentage that we had. So generally, I think it, when we're in a normal year, it's around 43, 44% local funding.
Anita?
Yes, sir. Back to page 57, and the question that Commissioner Rippel's had about the 5.1 million, it dawned on me that that is where we transferred the first tranche of the ARPA funds as we were required to do to a special revenue fund. That's what that is.
So that's what the 180 is? 118?
5,128,038, yes.
So your next one is Veteran Services. That's on page 83. That entire budget is up $420 or 0.6%. And I believe the majority of that was about $300 for additional professional services for Jenny. See if you have any questions on that, but that is essentially, yeah, it's a flat budget. Questions?
Good.
On page 85, Area Mental Health and Transportation, you have BCDC, Bedford Area Transit. This is where you'll see the elderly handicap transit piece, the NCDOT rural grant, Passages, which is an agency that provides substance abuse counseling that is through the state, and that's a flow-through from us. It flows to us, and then goes to them. It's a reimbursement piece. Alcohol treatment, and then the Trillium funds that we send to them. And that is, overall, that's up $10,050 or 1.6% from the original. That is based on the elderly handicap transit is where those funds increased.
On the transit...
Yes, sir.
The 193,000 that we supply, do they retain the money they charge people?
They do. They use those funds to support the service.
Support the services. So that doesn't have to flow through us?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It does not. So your next one, and I apologize, usually, this is where we would stop and we'd pick up later, but I see Rod's here and Anne's here, so if y'all are good, we're happy to move on to Quaffed Extension. You'll see Quaffed Extension is down 37,000 or 10.6%. And that's all related to the fact that you bought a tractor, a capital expenditure last year, and that is not in there this year, since that has decreased. But generally, their budget was fairly flat. Have any questions?
I have a question for Rod.
Okay.
What does it cost you to run a pesticide pickup thing or recycling for pesticides or chemicals?
It doesn't cost us anything here locally. When we have those opportunities, and they usually happen once every other year in each county. NCDIA partners with us. They actually come in and do all the work. They bring the contractor that is taking this stuff to incinerate it. It's basically, we set up a day and advertise it, usually at our office in the parking lot, and they'll come in and do the whole thing. So it costs...
So it's only once every other year?
We do that, yes. That's, they're able to get to every county once every other year, and I think we did ours this past year, so maybe next year we'll have another one. It does cost a lot of money to do that. Just so you know, NCDIA struggles to get that funded every year at a proper level. Talking with the person who oversees that whole procedure or that whole program, it's hard to, they get a favored rate with a contract. They do, and it's much cheaper if a farmer has pesticides on hand that they need to get rid of, and that happens occasionally, and it's better to move them, you know, this way than it is to let them stockpile or have them be disposed of in an illegal manner. So if there's a spill or a cleanup has to take place, if the farmer has to call an environmental company to come and do that, it's astronomical, the amount of money that's spent. So it's a, it's a good program, but they do have trouble keeping it funded at a level that keeps...
Well, the reason I asked is we talk about these mega sites. That was probably something that we ought to think about.
Oh, you're trying to mega sites for the trash?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Solid waste.
Well, so just, so just so you know, so you were talking about the disposal of pesticides. That's when we, when we have extra that they need to get rid of, or old pesticides. That's what I was addressing primarily. Now, we do have in this county, and again, partnering with NCDIA, we accessed over a couple of years, some grant money that was made available through the Pesticide Environmental Trust Fund. We took that money, purchased 20-foot shipping containers, and I actually purchased a couple 40-footers, to put at all of the dealerships in the county, all of the agricultural dealerships in the county have a container. This program is old. I mean, it goes way back before, I mean, it goes way back. It's, it's...
Seven years is really old.
It's a long. It was, it was actually there my first time here as an extension agent before I left for a little while. Really, that's what I'm, that's what I'm here to say. Anyway, I say all that to say this, the program...
Can a homeowner take stuff there?
It was originally designed for containers, empty containers, to be recycled. That's the program I'm talking about now.
Okay. Well, we're not talking about that.
Okay. If you're talking about the pesticides that need to be disposed of, yes, we advertise that in the paper and...
But that's once every two years.
It's once every two years.
So my question, I guess, was, and maybe you could find this out for us, if we were to try to implement something locally at our two mega sites, what would that...
What would that cost? And let me ask just for clarification, are you talking, you're talking about pesticides themselves that need to be disposed of versus empty containers that are going to be recycled? Oh, boy.
Just think, I was...
Yeah. That would take a...
You're the only person I knew how to ask that.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, generally, and we've had some conversation about that from the solid waste side as well. And I mean, typically, what we would do, we wouldn't have something where we would always do that. We would set up a day where it would be a hazardous materials collection day, and we would act a contract with a vendor, because the vendors will come in, and a vendor would come in and do that, and just, you know, sticker shock to let you know that is a very expensive thing. It's probably better than folks pouring it down in the ditch, but it is a very expensive program. And it's something we would, I mean, if there were grants available, we'd certainly chase those, but we would, we would do it as an annual, you know, maybe an annual process.
And to add to that, I think that that would be a sufficient way to handle, although, I mean, I think it's admirable to have something. At the end of the day, I get, most of those calls, if they go to other departments, they usually get funneled back to us. And the number of calls I get from homeowners to, with pesticides they need to get rid of, once a month, maybe, it runs, it'll run a little hot streaks. If somebody buys a property with a barn on it, they'll find some stuff they need to get rid of, or if someone passes away, or if a home is sold. When they call, most of the time, I can handle those requests. We actually have a container, so I mentioned the once every other year deal. We also have access to a storage container in Plymouth at the Vernon James, or at the Tybalt Research Station, that we, I have a key for it, and I can take pesticides into that building and store them, contact the NCDIA, and they will come by and pick them up. So there actually is a way that we're covering that in the interim, if that helps with that. But, I mean, it still would be...
Okay. Thank you.
But the, once, once every two years, that's done in your parking lot, that is for households?
It absolutely is. We advertise, try to put it in the paper and get the word out, and yeah, yeah. We'll have usually more homeowners, number-wise, than farmers coming. Now, the farmers will bring the bulk of the material, but usually, we get a lot of homeowners taking advantage of it, so yeah.
But if we had, if we have... But if we had, if we have two, two mega sites, you know, we might get a greater participation if we had it at one of those sites versus in your parking lot.
What I would suggest, again, and we're just thinking out loud, Christine, I'm doubling in your world. But if there was a, maybe a compromise, that would be to have a container or some storage capability on site, that if something came in, we could store it until the N C D A people can come by-
And pick it up.
...and dispose it. That, that's how they work, that's how they do the one in Plymouth. They, we let them know their stuff in there. And when they're out making their rounds, they'll come by and get that material. So that could be something, that might be a better way to look at it.
Yeah. Okay.
I'll have to help any kind of way.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I need to ask you a question before you leave.
Okay. You may, I'll stay put. All right. Thank you.
So the next one is soil and water conservation, page ninety-one. That budget's essentially flat, it's point eight, it's only fourteen hundred dollars. And as we look at our health insurance and our retirement rates, that simply, simply washes out across those. But Anne's here. If, if you have any questions for Anne on her budget?
Any questions? Thank you, Anne. We're good.
All right. And then I have page ninety-five, which is youth services. That's actually flat. Pamela Pals is a program that helps in mentoring kids. You have the Boys and Girls Club that you fund as an outside agency. That's where we show that because it's under youth services. J C P C is the piece where the board funds that match against the state funds to fund J C P C. So, and that's a flat budget.
Okay. On Pamela Pals, you've got their budget request forms in here now. They weren't, they didn't normally put them in here. But if you look at Pamela Pals, they're looking for two thousand dollars. They say that they've got, I don't know, would add that up, their revenues are, what, right at thirty thousand? But if you go over to J C P C, J C P C says in their budget, they're giving them thirty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars. Which is page one oh seven. So I'm not quite sure why we're funding them.
This is a match. It's a county match.
County match for what?
For that thirty-one, five, forty-five, fifteen, twelve pounds. Is that for it?
Well, the county match is thirty-one, fifty-five, the ten percent.
Right.
Okay. But they get in total, their total, what they're getting is thirty-four, seven.
So, so I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, I can certainly, we can certainly investigate it. Historically, they, they were funded at two thousand dollars from the board.
Right. So that was one of the reasons to ask for this backup.
But, but the actual county cash that's going through J C P C is thirty-one hundred.
Right. Right. But they're getting thirty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars from J C P C in total.
Total.
Which is more than he says his revenue is.
Yes.
Okay. So on page one oh nine are your outside agencies. And then if you flip over to page one ten, these are historically the outside agencies that have been funded by It is, it is a decrease of forty-six thousand dollars because you had some one-time funding that you did last year for a couple of the agencies. But I know there's been some conversations about outside agencies. We've added some additional information that was requested. And I'm guessing that's just something the board will want to talk about and, and see how you want to do on funding outside agencies. But historically, what we've done is if they, is if the outside agency made it into the budget, then we showed that as a continuation piece and funded them at the same level unless the board said, cut it out.
Well, there's a number of these I think we need to talk about.
And that's obviously the board's-
So I don't know if you want to do that now.
Your thing.
Cut it, cut it off here and do it.
And, well, why don't, why don't we start? And we'll cut it off at seven. Is that, okay?
If you want to talk about it, we might as well get started, I think, John.
We're there. We're there.
Yeah. Okay. So the first one is Aurora Recreation. They didn't send anything in in terms of a request. And the finance office sends to all of these agencies the same forms and letters asking for information to substantiate the funding. So Aurora didn't send anything in. The town of Bath is asking for two thousand dollars more, and they're saying they've got two hundred and fifty participants in their recreation programs. I'm not.
Second, Commissioner Rippel, on any, on any changes from last year-
That's-
-they would be listed as a service expansion.
Expansion. Right, right. Okay. So we don't need to talk about that here.
And I guess the question on these is, is it something the board, is it an initiative the board wants to continue to fund or not?
Right.
Yeah, I think, I think that's the primary thing we'd be talking about now, as for anybody.
Who else didn't send in anything?
I have that. Have some information on that. So the finance specialist, Elena Hale, made multiple attempts to reach out to the three agencies that we did not receive any paperwork from. She emailed them, followed up with phone calls. And this is the information that she has back from them. So Aurora Recreation, Elena said she sent the paperwork and followed up with emails with Judith Lannan, town clerk. And Judith, Judith stated that she's the only one working in the office and that she had a death in the family and would submit it as soon as possible. The Arts Council was the second agency we did not receive any paperwork from. And in following up with them, their board chair stated that the financial manager had resigned and that they had forwarded the information, the budget information, to the financial manager, I'm sorry, the consultant for them to prepare. Still have not received that yet. And then Agape was the last agency that we did not receive the paperwork from. And their director, Mr. Dobby, stated that they were in the middle of an audit and that they would receive, send it in as soon as possible.
So there's three, total of three.
So I guess the question would be for us is, do we want to consider continuing to fund these even though they haven't sent in, and we, they all, of course, have reasons, haven't sent in the requested information?
Well, I have an opinion. If we, if we don't save it, receive it by the time we approve the final budget, we just pull it, pull it out. I think, I think in all fairness, we make changes right up until the night that we, we approve the budget. So, I mean, we've made an effort to let them know that it's not been received. I guess we could send them an email and just tell them that the drop dead day is, you know, fast approaching.
And I'm okay with that if we have an email saying that, you know, there's an end to this.
Yeah. I mean, some of the ones I saw were dated back in February, and we're in the May, almost to the end of May. So it's not like, you know, the death was back in March or February.
Or April.
Or April. I mean, our Ruralington Club gives scholarships away every year, but you have to apply. If you don't apply, you don't get one. So.
So I believe we're wrapping up service expansions on the thirtieth. So if I give them until, let's say, the twenty-ninth, the day before our final meeting on outside agencies, does that seem reasonable?
That's fair.
I think it is.
I will let everyone know in an email that we need it by the twenty-ninth.
Do you have another?
Well, I mean, there's- There's other ones in here, like the Bellhaven Memorial Museum. It says it's closed. And they got no statistics for us.
Okay. So Commissioner, on that one, we actually did receive something from them.
Right.
They did close during the pandemic for a couple of years. But they are trying to open back up. So if you look back on page-
I know.
You, you've seen that?
Page one thirty-five. Page one thirty-five.
Is that where it is? They're asking for some funds to be able to make some repairs to open back up.
Yeah. And then, what is it? Citizens in the South Side? They, they filled out the form completely, but they, I looked for the nine ninety for them. It wasn't in this either, was it? I didn't see it in here. So I'm not sure they're even a tax-free- Nonprofit.
I'm happy to follow up with them on that question. If you'd like me to.
No question.
Yes.
Is this board satisfied that we are operating within the general statutes by even considering giving money to these agencies without putting together a viable plan to perform oversight and have contracts with these agencies that receive the money?
Have we received anything at all from the state that things have changed as relates to these outside agencies?
So, so there are some, there were some statute changes that occurred that allowed, that allowed, if you're funding an agency, I think it's over a thousand dollars, you can require them to provide you an audit. I think y'all had some discussion about this a few years ago. There was also a change in the statute a couple of years ago, as I recall, that said if they were receiving a total of five thousand dollars, then anybody in the public could go to them and ask for their, a copy of their books, a copy of their P and L, you know, their financials. And they were required to, to give that to them, more of a transparency piece. So those were the changes that I saw.
Are we gonna, are we gonna get a copy of that general statute? Will we look at it? Because the issue to government was of the opinion that we shouldn't be getting involved in any of this unless we have some stringent guidelines predetermined-
Excuse me, can I finish?
Predetermined as to how we're going to perform oversight and how, and there'd be a viable agreement between all parties for the money, the public's money.
I mean, I, I feel comfortable continuing to do what we've done until we get some kind of official document. I mean, I'm not, I've not gotten anything as chairman.
Yeah. I mean, I think that, I think that there's the opportunity, if we wanted to, I think there's the opportunity to maybe strengthen some things. If, I mean, if you want to engage in a contract, you know, we request information from them. They tell us what they're going to do with it. If, if there's some, if there's some additional reporting you'd like for them to see, that, you know, because what we get out of this, what we get out of their paperwork is, we ask them to tell us who they served, what they did, how many they served, how many they did, what they're requesting, what are they going to do next year with the funds? I mean, if you would, if you want to strengthen that and make that a signatory thing, we could certainly do that if the board so desired to do that. You know, we'll do what you want us to do.
You know, I think as long as they can give an account of what they spent the funds for, I'm good with it.
I think if there's a general statutes that relates to this, we need to know about it. Because all I've heard about it is from Stan and what he learned at Commissioner's School.
So, I mean, there, if you look at the, you have to be, it has to be a public purpose. They have to be, you can only fund folks that are providing a public service, that are doing things that you as a county could do on your own, whether that be social programs or health programs or food programs, those kind of things, recreation, education, those kind of things. So I think in general, all the, all the agencies that you are funding are doing those things. And then there is, in, in the blog posts that I read, you know, there, there is comments, Karen Malonzi wrote a blog about that and said, you know, you need to make sure that they are serving a public purpose and that you're seeing what they're doing. So, I mean, do you, can you strengthen some of that? Sure. If, if the board would like to put a contract in place with signatories, we can certainly do that. I don't know that that's, you know, in, in the blog posts that I read, when she talked about that, it was, those are some things that you could do to strengthen it if you wanted to. Didn't necessarily have to. You just needed to make sure that you were comfortable that they were doing what they were supposed to do and it was an appropriate expenditure of funds. But again, if, if that's something this, this board wants to move forward with, we can certainly work on that and, and work with the county attorney to, to make a signatory, some kind of, you know, standard document that lists out, you know, what the public purpose is. And, and continue to have them provide us the documents that they have that show who they serve and how many they serve. You know, we can certainly do that and formalize that in some more formal manner, I guess, if you'd like for us to do that. We can certainly do that.
I, I don't think it would hurt to have a one-page document, a cover, that basically says, you know, we're certifying the attached information, the revenue and the expenses and the number of people served and our purpose. Not to regurgitate it, because some of the information that follows that, but some kind of certification.
Well, what I'm talking about is our policy. You know, not so much what they give us, but our policy demanding what we expect from them. And we give them in return and they give us. And it is as if a two-party contract was effected. And unfortunately, this is public's money. And we're supposed to perform oversight as their representatives.
Have we run into a problem with any of these agencies?
I'm just telling you what I was told at, as per new general statutes, which we don't have. And that was told to me by the school of government. And they said that this is a new, a new initiative, as per general statutes. And we need to be very aware of it.
Well, let me read-
This was part of the ethics training.
Let me read you the general statute, then.
Well, I would rather have a copy of the general statute.
Well, I've got it in front of me.
Well-
I'll give it to you. I'll send it to you.
I want one from staff. I'm sorry. I want, I want the general statute.
He's getting it right off the website.
All right. I stand, I would rather have it from staff.
That's fine.
Okay. That can be your general, you can, you can go about that. I want that one. We've already had times where general statutes have been misread or misidentified or-
Well, then you read it.
No, no, this is for you, John. John, this is your thing. I want staff to provide us what we need. And then we will go from there.
Okay.
This is for you.
Well, I, I think some kind of interim step would be, you know, once a year, the certification when they provide the information for the budget. You know, that one person is certifying that it's true and correct to the best of their ability, blah, blah, blah.
Well, I guess you could just change that information down here.
Well, I guess you could just change the data, the information down here at the bottom of this.
Yeah.
To say that. So I'm happy to work with the county attorney to see if we can figure out something that strengthens that a little, a little more than what we currently have, that maybe we can bring back to the board, that they'll feel comfortable with.
Yeah. I mean, the problem we ran into when we tried to change the EMS and the fire departments is that, you know, it's getting harder and harder for people to get an audit of any sort, if you're a small organization, from an outside firm, because of the liability. So about the only thing that you really can get anymore on these real small ones is a copy of their quit books, assuming they've got quit books.
Yeah, and, and, you know, the two statutes that I'm familiar with, the first one, this board's had a discussion about, and this was back probably in 16 or 17, where you could require nonprofits, fire departments, EMS agencies, that you provide money to, to do an audit, and, and provide you that audit. And, and I think what this board said, we understand, is the cost of that. That if you gave somebody, if you gave an agency a couple thousand dollars, it may cost them $5,000 to have an audit done. And this board said, we're okay with not having that. And the statute doesn't say that you have to, it doesn't say that you have to, it says you can. You can require them to give that to you. It's not required that they give it to you, but if you ask them for that, if you say that it's contingent upon us giving you funds, then they would have to do that. But the law doesn't say they have to do that in, in return. The other piece is, is the change, the one that I'm aware of, that, that I think was four or five years ago, that said it was a public disclosure. It was, it was people who were going in and were saying, I'd like to see your books. And those private nonprofits were saying, I'm not showing you my books. And the General Assembly said, well, if you're receiving a certain amount, a certain dollar amount, and I think it was $5,000, I'd have to pull the statute and say, I think it was $5,000. If they received $5,000 from any source, any governmental source, then the North Carolina statute then said, anybody from the public, you are required to give them these documents if they ask for them. It was a transparency thing. So those are the, those are the two that I'm aware of. Obviously, there's always the emoluments clause that says, you can't give something just to a private entity to benefit a private entity. It has to be for a public purpose. And then the comment from, from the blog post was that, you know, it was, it was a good thing to have, you know, you want to make sure that they were providing a public purpose and using those funds appropriately, because you're, you're essentially required to make sure that happens.
Are we at a stopping point, or you want to continue?
I mean, I think that's up to you. I think y'all were scheduled to go to seven, they have about eight minutes. You know, we can, we can do economic development planning, and then you're into the school systems and the education. So, so economic development's on page 199, and that budget is up $363 or .1%. The, the planning budget is down $26,413, and that's because of capital. You purchased a truck last year, we're not purchasing a truck this year. If you want us to talk, I'm happy to talk about the funding we did for the school system and the community college. Essentially, what we did, and we talked about this in the message Monday, was we looked at what the C P I was when we were starting to craft the budget, and it was at 6.2% at that time. So what we did on the public school system, you know, they asked for a whole lot more money than that, but what we did was we looked at their current expense, and we increased that by 6.2%. And then we increased what our estimate was on the statutory calculation for sales tax, because they have to get that percentage of the sales tax dollars. And as the sales tax dollars go up, they obviously get more funds for that. So we're showing about an 8.7% increase to the school system, $1.4 million, 1.47 million to them. And then the community college, we met their funding request, their entire funding request was $190,398, and that was 6%. It was below the 6.2% C P I we were looking at, so we fully funded them in our recommended budget. And, and then I would, I would feel more comfortable if we deferred to the next meeting for the sheriff so that they're able to be here and have discussions about whole budgets. Because essentially, we did this, you know, we essentially did the same thing with the sheriff's office. We looked at the C P I with, with the new sheriff being in place and letting them determine what it was they felt like they needed to do in this first year of their budget, so. I guess, are there any questions on the schools that have the methodology we went through on the schools? And do you want me to have, I mean, y'all had some pretty intense conversations with the schools? You had some pretty intense conversations with the community college? Happy to ask them to come next time, or, you know, or not?
I'm personally good with, with the conversation we've already had and your recommendation.
I'm good as well.
So then, so the next meeting we get together, which will be.
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
25th.
So we're a week from tonight. We'll start off with the sheriff's office and pick up the rest of emergency services, finish that out, and then go into enterprise funds, which we have a water fund, the solid waste fund. And that would probably, you know, depending upon how much y'all get into that night, that'd probably be a fairly short meeting, because then we'll go into the surface expansions at a specific meeting, because we'll bring all those agencies together where you can ask questions of them. And then we'll do that in one meeting, and then you'll have your opportunity to finalize the budget at the final meeting, if you so choose.
Okay, we'll reconvene until next Thursday, the 25th, starting at 5:00. Thank you.